... order.
We pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call shows all 21 supervisors present.
Okay, we seek a motion to approve the agenda.
Boomer, come on in.
Boomer. And second is?
A second.
Supervisor. Members of the public wishing? Excuse me, we have vote, so. Green to approve, red to disapprove. No. Members of the public wishing to be heard. Kim Bremer?
Sure.
Okay, Kim, up here with five minutes.
I don't know if I'm in.
Okay.
All right, thank you, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm just here to give a couple of comments about the Chippewa County permit and fees for milk haulers. Kim Bremer, I'm the executive director of Venture Dairy Cooperative, and I recognize that we were not involved in the stakeholder meetings, but now we've heard from members, so just a couple of things that I wanted to make sure were on record. Chippewa County is home to diverse agriculture, with dairy farming being a key industry in your county. Milk sales generate over $92 million a year from your family farms, contributing obviously significantly to your income and tax revenue, which I don't need to tell anyone in the room that. Chippewa County is ranked in the top 10 in the number of milk cows and herds in the state. You're in the top 2% in the nation in market value of dairy production because you have cheese manufacturing that call your county home. I was glad to see that you're giving the presentation tonight regarding the milk hauling permit, because there still appears to be confusion out there. We're hearing from members in milk haulers now, and I recognize that you have had stakeholder meetings in the past, but we are hearing from people that it affects now. I understand this was a negotiation with stakeholders, but just food for thought in the future moving forward. Being told to accept these conditions or milk, a perishable product can't be hauled at all, isn't exactly a very level playing field for collaboration. There's still practical concerns as routes change in real time, lack of efficiencies at the plant for smaller loads, and I understand that when this process started, fees were proposed that were much higher, that there was negotiation on some of the routes, but there's still an awful lot of people affected. If you're adopting these under Chapter 349, I guess our legal team would say it's questionable if you have the statutory authority to impose a fee, but based on road limits adopted under 349. Now, your online presentation tonight and the website have different statutes, so I'm not sure which one it is, but I'm sure that'll be cleared up tonight. I just think it's unfortunate for a precedent like this to be set in Chippewa County. I am hopeful we're going to hear the governor's budget address this week, and hopefully there will be additional road funding, and I know that that's going to be a big deal for counties all over the state, because this is not the first time I've been to a county board meeting to have a discussion like this. My hope is future changes can be based on more collaboration that isn't necessarily just a fee and regulation, because that alone is not going to fix your roads. And certainly if you would like any help in the future, looking at road funding that's available, you have great legislators in your part of the state, and Venture Dairy Co-op would be happy to help as well, so thank you.
Thank you. All right. No other members of the public wishing to be heard? We'll move on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Two advisors, three generals, motions to approve.
Is there a second?
Erickson, second.
Okay, those in favor, push your green button. It's not red.
Twenty-one, yes, zero, no.
Okay, then we'll move on to reports. County administrative review and updates. Update from the Wisconsin broadband equity. Randy?
Thank you. Good evening, I'm Randy Schultz, I'm the county administrator. Yeah, so this is as hot off the presses as you can get. We received, well, some of us received a letter February 8th regarding this funding. I'm going to call it BEAD, that's the new acronym for this program. I was actually at the WCA conferences last year, and I was mediator for this topic, which I didn't even know what the topic was, they just kind of call you and ask you if you found, told, tell you to do something. So I did learn about this, but at the end of the meeting, basically what they said is they'll be in touch with us, because they have to get some feedback, they have to do some surveys, they got to get the maps right. The maps have been a big issue, as everybody kind of knows in this room. So we didn't hear anything from them until this letter came out. So what this is about is there's $1.5 million available for the whole state to do planning for the funds that are coming in, and we'll get in details as we move forward, and we get this in front of the committee, because this is going to have to come back to the county board. But what they're really looking at, if you look at the second paragraph there, if we can find a way to collaborate with another group, and what they're defining as a group is, they're called Regional Economic Development Organizations, a REDU, and for us, that's Momentum West. So that's one of the areas we're going to look at to get the resources for us, so we can get this work done. So this is the letter we received, kind of goes with some details. Again, I can't stand in front of you guys and telling you I don't know everything that we're bringing in front of you, but we don't, but you can see the deadline of March 7th, which is required to get this information back to you. So of course, this, in my world, created a whole bunch of emails. Mondays, I've told you many times, we meet with administrators. Some of them didn't receive the letter, some didn't know anything that was going on with this, but really, at the end of the day, they're going to ask us to do a letter of intent, and that's what's in front of you. If you go to, if Tracy go to the second page of that, it really gives us four options. One is to collaborate with the REDUs, those Regional Economic Development Organizations, and at the end, I'll show you a map of that. Participate with the planning grant, collaborating with the Great Lakes Intertribal Council, we probably went through that one. And then the other one is go on your own independently. Some are probably going to choose that. I think Chippewa County is so far advanced compared to a lot of counties, knowing what needs to be done. We got great telcos we work with, they know what needs to be done. So my recommendation, when it gets to the committee and then comes back to the county boards, is to do the REDU one. I did reach out, if you look at the map for Momentum West, I've discovered that is an organization of one. So he was a little excited when the webinar, I didn't get to watch the webinar, because I got the letter after the webinar actually took place, but I watched it, and then I called him, his name's Steve John, and he was a little shocked by listening to the webinar. They weren't quite under the understanding that this was going to be put on them to kind of do all this organization. Nobody really knew what the requirements were, that's what he told me when they talked to him. So, well, it's kind of up in the air for that, but they're anticipating we're going to get between $12,000 and $16,000 per county, which isn't a whole lot of money. In the webinar, they suggested that we hire somebody, we're not hiring somebody for $12,000 to $16,000 for six months, because this has to be back to them by August. But after talking with Steve, he does, they do have somebody under contract now that does this very limit outreach, so my suggestion to him is, I said, I'm sure Chippewa County and all the other counties would be more than willing to give you our share if we could get somebody that's going to come and do the requirements of discovering what sites need to be located, and, because there's stuff about having public hearings, there's having a committee together, which makes perfect sense if you're not to where we are, where we know where the problems is, we know that everybody wants broadband, but there's other counties just not there, so I think they kind of had to sculpt that all together. So fortunately, I don't have all the answers, as usual, with this stuff, as it comes to us, you know, pretty quickly, but I wanted to get in front of the board because of the tight timeline. So that's the plan, and they haven't, I haven't been able to read it anywhere that said that if we don't do part of this planning, we're not going to get any funding, but they definitely hint really strong towards it, because the purpose of the planning is to decide the sites that aren't covered. And then they're going to allocate, I think there's $45 billion for the whole grant program for the feds, and they're anticipating Wisconsin to get 800 million to a billion. And their goal is, and I'm not going to get the year right probably, because I only seen it once, but I think it's by 2028, that every person in Wisconsin that wants high-speed broadband will have it. That's what their, that's their marching orders, that's what they're supposed to do. So this is the first part of that, and then the actual, how the grants come through, I think they're going to use the PCS, or the way they do it now, as far as a grant program, that's what they've talked about, so I don't think we're going to have to do any of that kind of work, but we definitely have to be involved up front of this, so. Any questions? Understand it's clear as mud like I do? I apologize not having more information, but that's all we have at this time.
Okay. Yep. All right.
We're just going to do our annual CIP update, and this is for 2021 through 2023. Here's a little history about the implementation of the CIP policy, and remember, in June is when you approve CIP projects by resolution for the following year's budget. So in June of 2023 here, you're going to go approve those projects by resolution, and those are the projects that are going to be in the budgets that come through for the 2024 budget. Let's see here. Capital projects have a cost of $50,000 or more and have a useful life of more than three years, and/or it extends the life of an existing asset. This is just the overview of how we paid for CIP in the past using sales tax and bonding funds for the last three years. And you'll notice the one, the bonding funds for the $3 million here in 2023, that has largely contributed to the Coffin Bridge. This is just a little hands page, if you ever looking through it yourself, to help you read this. This first project here is the records management system, this is called the Spillman Project for the sheriff's department. This project started in 2018, it is now finally complete, and we ended up transferring back $48,980 back to the sales tax fund, because there were sales tax funds associated with Then we had our infamous radio tower project, it's still here. We're hoping that this year is our last year, and next year I can give it to you as completed, that's what we're hoping. We just have a few checklist things that are to be completed, and we should be seeing the end. Here are the 2021 projects that were still in progress as of my last update back in February 2022. They are still in progress. A lot of the projects, though, that are roof replacements or something like that, a lot of them are actually in collaboration with another project, or they're substantially complete. The office remodels, they're substantially complete also. We're just waiting mostly for final billing. Here's another slide with 2021 projects. There are two projects still in progress on this slide. The highways and bridges, that's going to stay and remain in progress for up to five years because of the state and federal funding components. The Boundary Waters Project is in progress and should be finished this year. This is the last slide for the 2021 projects. You're going to see a sheriff clerical redesign again, we're just, it's still in progress, we're just waiting for the final billing. For the, all of the 2021 projects that were completed in 2022, we didn't return any funds of theirs to the sales tax funds, but you can see where we came at, in at for the other projects where they were maintained within account or not requested for, by grant, $163,000. For 2022 projects, the only project completed here is the parking lot maintenance. All the other projects are still in progress. Let me see here, there was, a lot of them are really close to being done, like that roof replacement project. I know we're waiting on the final billings with that project. Let's see here, dump truck, we have a hard time getting replacement vehicles, I think it's been about a year, year and a half that we're holding off on that one, not being able to get that item. And here's another slide of the 2022 projects. The only project on this slide that's completed is the Phase 2 of the highway building security improvements, and you'll see that they came in just under of $34,602. There's two other projects that were actually closed down at the bottom, it's the climate change flood control buffer and the forest dam drop structure replacement. Those were both closed but not completed, and they will be reapplied for in the future after further analysis, as you can see, for that dam failure analysis, it could take two to three years with the DNR, so. And here is the 2022 projects, the last page of those. $175,000 was returned to the sales tax fund for the 2022 projects, and a lot of it was because of the field service cameras, those are being donated by Pessy for, gave the donation for them, for the $75,000, and the other two were for that drop dam structure and the flood buffer one. And here's just for the 2023 projects, so they are just getting started, you know, since we're only in February, so just to let you know, they're in progress. And these were the projects that you approved during June, during the resolutions. And there's really, the department heads have been given information for the 2024 budget for the CIP forms, they'll be bringing them to your policy committees for your approval by late March, and then a new recommended plan for the 2024 budget will be presented to you guys in June, you know, along with those resolutions. Any questions? All righty.
All right, so implementing the fraud hotline for employees, a little history here, as you guys have talked about before, in 2018, I attended a fraud training put on by Sickage, and really, the training was interesting that they gave, but I always see the people that I sat around the table with and had stories of fraud really gets your attention. So that's why in 2019, and, going to start in 2019, obviously something happened a little after 2019. So from 2019 to 2021, we did forensic interior control reviews, which is a forensic audit, that is a deep dive into our operations. Obviously, we get audited every year, but this is a whole different level. It really, basically, they'll go and grab whatever information wherever they want and run that information all the way through to make sure we have internal controls and that there's no fraud, obviously, taking place. And then there was presentations by Sickage, and then there was some additional training by Sickage for that. So really, why implement the fraud hotline? It was part of the training, definitely recommended by Sickage as a good internal control. You can see some other reasons up there, but really, for me, at the end of the day, and I got interviewed by some of the TV stations, and really, what came to my mind when they asked me the question is that our citizens have to know that the money they're providing us in tax levy is going where it's supposed to be going, and it's not going anyplace else. So really, having that confidence, doing the forensic audit, having this fraud hotline is really all part of that strategy. So we did reach out, talk to some other counties, and came up with a lighthouse services that does this type of service, so we signed a contract with them. So implemented with employees, we had MLK on January 17th, talked to them about that, we'll be doing some training, obviously, or already did some training with them. And then there's really two levels of training, the department head level, managers, cash handling employees, and then all other employees. But we want our employees to know that we did forensic audits, we did great, as I've talked before about, the results of those, we passed with flying colors, which is great, says a lot to our finance staff, but we want employees to know that we are keeping an eye on everything, and that they have an opportunity, if they see something, that they can, they have a way to report that. So here's really the procedure, and we really wanted to have it where we weren't involved in it. We didn't want it to have an internal number that went to me, or went to finance, or went to corporation counsel, anything like that, that's why we implemented or put the contract in for lighthouse. And then the person that reports, they really do have the ability to be anonymous completely, or they can only let lighthouse know and not share Chippewa County, or they can let lighthouse know and let Chippewa County know. So any reporting automatically goes to the county minister and the finance director, unless, of course, the complaint's about us, then it can't come to us, because we cannot know about it. So they have protocols and procedures behind the scenes set up for all that. And then this, the instant report, this is really the kind of questions they're asking, who, what, where, when. Obviously, the more detail we can get, the better it is for us to be able to follow up on that. But very good service. The counties we talked to, you know, doesn't get used that often, but I think it's another tool that allows our employees to report if they see anything, or, and they don't want to be, you know, they want to be anonymous about it, so I think it's a really good tool for that. And then here's the questionnaire, and services is continuing, I won't go through all that, but there, you know, they do the deep dive, they'll do the, get all the information for us, and then provide it to the proper person, depending on who the complaint is and what's going on, and then we would take it over from there and decide if it's an internal concern, or if we got to bring law enforcement in, or whatever the issue may be, so. I think it really, again, a really good tool for us to let our citizens know that we're using their funds accordingly and what they're intended to be. Want any questions?
I do have one.
Go ahead.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
I forget. There I am. This lighthouse is, is it a for-profit business?
Oh, yeah.
Like a?
Yeah, it's a third-party provider, yep, a contracted service.
Okay, but I'm kind of trying to get at, like, an investigative-type service?
I wouldn't say they're investigative, they're a way to have it outside your county control, that it, that the employees know that it's not coming internally, that there is an outside agency taking the information and then deciding how that has to be distributed back to us. The reason to do it is so our employees feel confident that they're not going to get in trouble, or they're not going to get targeted, or if they want to be anonymous, they can. I think that's a big, big deal for them, for all employees, so that's really the reason to have it, but they're a service, just like anything else.
Thank you.
Yep. Good.
Thank you. Health insurance plan?
That's Tony coming up for that.
Okay.
All right, so the first slide here is some history. I went through this in great detail during orientation about our benefit plans, so just a reminder that we went to self-funding with health insurance effective in January of 2022. Our plan is to go through the details of what that looks like fiscally, but I wanted to give a little history. If we jumped on to number three, the benefits of going to self-funding is really having more flexibility with our plan design, accessibility to claims, which we definitely have, some pharmacy and benefit plan design flexibility, and then during good claims years, we're able to reap the benefits of that, and so we'll be able to illustrate that here on the next couple slides. So this first slide is our fiscal report from Ameribank that was provided for us from our consultant, Brown &amp; Brown, our health insurance consultant. Some key things I wanted to point out, just popped up there in red, that is, the circled area are the payments that we received back, because we do have some insurance, so we're not completely self-funded, we are partially self-funded, we have a small stop-loss plan that if an employee hits a certain deductible level, then its insurance kicks in, so you'll see that those are all negative numbers, because those are dollars that came back to us in the form of a refund, you could call it, from that stop-loss carrier. So we had a few high claims at the end of the year. The next thing that just got circled there is our loss ratio. So this year, it was 82.5%. What that means is, we set our premium, which is considered 100%, that is charged out to departments for what we anticipate our claims to be, and it's not just claims, it's going to be our fixed costs and our claims for medical and for prescription. It ended up coming in at 82.5% of what we anticipated, so it was a good year. The previous slide talked about how we get to reap the benefit then of those good years, and so another thing I thought I'd add up here on the top right in green, is the loss ratio that we've had over the last several years. So from 2015 through 2021, you're going to see, when we were fully insured, this was the loss ratio from 76.5 all the way to 81%. So what happened in those years is the fully insured health insurance plan that we were under, which was Security Health Plan, they reaped the benefit of us having those good years. Had we been fully insured, or had we been self-insured, we would have saw those savings, and we would have been able to keep those funds in our account, so that's the goal. You'll also see that there was a year in there that it was over 100%, that means that year we lost, and they usually say every three to five years, you will have a bad year. I, previously, worked for an organization for 15 years, we never had a good year. That was rare. So this is more typical, it is more typical to have three to four good years and one bad year, and so this is what we're hoping to see, so those good years will help pay for that one bad year that happens on occasion. This next slide is just the exact same data, just showed in a little bit different way, in case you like bar graphs. So it'll show you the fixed costs in green, the prescription costs in dark blue, and then you'll see the light blue is your medical, and then where our premiums are set. This is a good way to see that those first two years, when we were just going into self-funding, they looked pretty low. That's going to be the case when you just go self-funding, because the previous year is getting covered by the fully insured plan. That won't happen in this year for January, February, it should be closer to that bar, where that line is. So you'll see at the end of the year, we were above where our premiums are set, that's also very common, because people hit their deductible and decide, I'm going to have all the surgeries possible at the end of the year, to try and capture that opportunity with the deductible. So it's usually pretty common to see that as well. Next, I think we're going to have Lori talk about it from a fiscal cash side.
All right. So all we wanted to show was just our accounts that are in our self-funded account, our self-funded account, and when you go look at the budget in Fund 703, these are accounts you're going to see, it's over on the right-hand side. Over on the left-hand side would be something very similar, I'm sorry, it doesn't show the bottom on this slide, very well, but I bet it does in your tablets. But that would be more of like a balance sheet, would be over on your left-hand side, and over on the right-hand side would be more of like an income statement. So our income statement is what So our income statement is what Tony is talking about, is she's taking more of the revenues, less expenses, that's where she's coming up with. And ours was 1.5 million, I'm just winging it off the top of my head of what I think it was. I think it was 1.55.
Five, seven, yeah.
Oh, oh, okay. Just so you know, we, I know it's going to be less, I have some closing entries to do yet. I think we're going to be right around the 500,000, we're going to have to set up as claims payable. So that will reduce that 1.5 down to 1, 1 million. So just so you know, there's some outstanding items I have left to do, so. But I'll give you the full numbers at my annual report, or at the financial report here in May. Okay? For that fine.
Any questions for Lori and I on the self-funded health plan for 2022 before I move on? All right. So the next slides are really about why did we go to self-funding, and some of the things that we can do. And so some of the things that self-funding allows us to do is really attack some of the high-cost prescription claims, and there are some things that we're going to be working with our broker to be able to do that. So there's some strategic plan items that we'll be focusing on. There's also several high-cost medical claims. The highest is cancer, next highest is actually musculoskeletal, and then cardiovascular disease, specifically for Chippewa County, that's the order. The three that are underlined are really our focuses for 2023. Musculoskeletal, that's going to be your lower back, lower and upper back plane, really, and really addressing PT, chiropractic work, a lot of different things that you can do fiscally, more responsibly for a plan than prescriptions and surgery. And so there's lots of things that we can do creatively to help our employees with this decision, and we've already started that education. Same thing with Centers of Excellence, that's really helping steer our employees to high-quality providers that are at a lower cost. And so if you can go get an MRI for $5, $800 versus an MRI for $3,000 to $4,000 at a provider, which there's definitely that, that difference here, just in this local area, setting up your plan design so that you can steer people to high-quality, lower-cost MRIs and other, other services under that Centers of Excellence. And then the last one is Advanced Primary Care Clinic, that's the one that we are actually going to, to end our, our discussion on. There's several slides that are embedded here related to that. We have our first informational meeting that, starting tomorrow. Advanced Primary Care is a practice that shifts the focus of primary care towards quality versus quantity. And so Reform Medicine is the organization that we are going to be using as our Advanced Primary Care Clinic. They are going to be coming here and presenting to employees tomorrow and again next week. And really, what they're going to be able to offer our employees is an opportunity to go to preventative care, to urgent care kind of visits. If you have, I think you have pink eye, or strep throat, those types of services, lab work, all of that is going to be free to the employee. And what that'll do is it'll drive our costs down, because they are able to offer that service to us at a much lower cost, at a higher quality. There's many examples of employees, and I'm sure some of you have this in this room, where, one, you're having difficulty with access, getting into the doctor, but two, when you go into the doctor, they're telling you that you have 30 minutes, make sure you prioritize your visit, and they're only going to talk about what they're, what you're there to talk about. And so you're not getting that quality care. Doctors, unfortunately, and a lot of the providers in this area are motivated on quantity. They have so many visits that they have to get in, in for the day, and they're not allowed to extend those visits. Going to this type of a system, they're going to be providing 30- to 60-minute visits every time they meet with you, and if they aren't meeting your need in that visit, because you had a lot more stuff that you needed to talk about, you'll schedule another one. And it'll all be included in that free, it'll be free to them. Chippewa County also does not pay per service, it's paying per member. So the cost that we will, that we've contracted with them, it's a rate per member, so per employee and their dependent, per month. And so the incentive that, that they, that the employee will have is it's free, and then our incentive is all of those costs will be much lower than if they were going to the traditional provider. So this will be effective March 15th. Employees can start calling as of March 1st. Like it says up here, you can kind of read through a lot of the specifics. A contract was signed. All the different ways in which you can use these services are listed there, laboratory costs, office visits, generic prescriptions. They opened a new clinic in Hallie, this was important for us to make sure it was closer to us. We might have tried to do this sooner had they had a clinic open, but they have Eau Claire, Menominee, Hudson, and then there's a Chippewa Falls location. Why we'll be doing this, again, similar to things that are already shared, high quality, not quantity, longer visit times, accessibility, they're in-person the same day or the next day. And we've also been receiving lots of different referrals. So Chippewa Falls School District currently is working with Reform Medicine, been with them for five years. Several local banks have been using them, one for four years, and then two for one year. So they've had, 2022 was their first full year. And then also Dunn County, they have been with, with them for one year. All positive, from positive employee feedback from their service and the quality, all positive savings, all of them have saved a certain amount of money, and all have just, nothing, like I said, but positive things to say, and very encouraging for all of us to be able to move in this direction. At the end of the agenda today, there is going to be a policy. Randy's going to talk a little bit more about that once it hits the agenda, but it's, it's in regards to an HRA incentive to encourage employees to go to the informational meeting and to set up their first visit. And so our proposal is if they do that, if our employees set up, go to the informational meeting and have their first visit by November 1st, that we'd like to give them an HRA incentive, so $250 for the employee, or up to $500 if both the employee and spouse go. And so the, the customer, or the information we got from Dunn, those other banks in the Chippewa Falls School District, proved to us that if we incentivize employees, that the, the return on investment's actually higher. The difference between the utilization rate is also improved. So our hope is that we can offer that, to be able to give that, just to give you an illustration of just one of them. One of the banks, for example, that did not incentivize, had a, let me make sure I say it correctly. There we go, 37% utilization, and they had an overall savings of $46,000 after accounting for the Reform Med expense, as well as all the savings in plan. The Chippewa Falls School District had 47.6% their first year, they incentivized with the exact same incentive that we're recommending, and their savings was 800,000. And that was just in what you can measure. There's a lot of things that they have talked about that you can't, that you can't measure. You can't measure if someone went to good quality care and didn't have a surgery. Those are things that are hard to measure. So this 800,000 is just strictly what they can measure. So there's a lot of positive. When you ask Reform Med, what's the number-one goal that we should have as an organization with rolling this out, and it's utilization. It's, it's free for them to go. Someone asked me once, why would I go to Reform Med that's free versus going to my preventative care visit, which is also free in our plan design? One, accessibility. Two, you know, you're going to have a better experience, and then, and then you're going to save the plan dollars. So ultimately, the more that we get there, the more that we can keep our plan with a zero premium, potentially utilize those savings in other areas such as wages for our employees. I'm very passionate about this, I love this stuff. I know Randy's excited about this. The next few slides, I'll just go ahead and let you kind of read through on your own, it gives some illustrations of just the time that you have in your current visits, it's very short in duration compared to what you're going to, what the employees will experience. And then again, all the free services that the employee will experience using Reform Med. One I didn't really share a lot about is medical weight loss. They really believe in medical weight loss and helping employees to get healthy from a weight loss standpoint, because it does affect all of the other things from heart disease, cancer, and other areas of their lives. So that, this is a unique focus that Reform Med offers in comparison to some of the other agencies that we looked at. Any questions?
Then we will move on to department reports. Brian Kelly. After he gives his report, then the supervisors will have an opportunity to ask questions if you have.
Good evening, everyone. Highway Commissioner Brian Kelly. Following up with some information, I sent you a letter back on January 19th with some of the high points of this issue, but I wanted to get here tonight and talk a little bit more in detail about some things that we've been working on with milk hauling in the spring. And this was presented to the Highway Committee also on February 1st. So we'll talk about the background of why we're doing more with weight limits in the spring, talk about some of the enforcement efforts that have taken place. We put together a stakeholder work group to brainstorm this idea and come up with a plan, talk about that process, and then our county weight limits, what we're doing, and the state laws that allow us to do that. And then we'll talk about milk hauling and how that specifically will be done in the spring, and their permits. Background, first of all, just the general deteriorating, deteriorating pavement conditions in the county. We, with our regular budget, can pave about eight or 10 miles a year, and we have 489 miles of roads, so those roads have to last 50 to 60 years. We have to do things like this to protect them. But we know we're going backwards, our pavement conditions are declining, and we're not able to keep up. A pavement design life is closer to 25 years, not 50 or 60. Back in 2017, we had some damages up in the town of Ruby, and then, of course, in 2021, the real significant damages, Highway F from 40 to Highway M. So we've all along not said that milk hauling was the cause of those damages. In fact, we've never blamed them at all for those damages. We have some ideas of what happened on Highway F, but not really any proof in that, but definitely want to reiterate that we're not blaming milk hauling for these damages. But this is what happened on Highway F. We had some significant, well, seven miles, significant, $1.7 million in project costs, wasn't even in our five-year CIP when this happened. So we had to come up with emergency funds from the county, we had to cancel other projects at the Highway Department, reprioritize and get these emergency repairs done. So it's really hard to plan a five-year CIP when, when something like this can happen. So at that time, we had a former State Patrol employee on our committee, and he had a great idea, let's send a letter to the State Patrol, request additional enforcement. We copied the Secretary of Transportation from the DOT on that letter, and it was a very quick response. They were out here meeting with us right away, and, and they started training our Sheriff's Department on, on laws and different ways of enforcement. And, and they really ramped up the presence for enforcement in the spring of '22. State Patrol was here a lot more than they've been any year since I've been here. We reached out to the public, educated them, we met with the Towns Association, educated them. One only standing, or applause I got after Towns Association presentation, that was kind of fun, but we talked about it on social media through the Sheriff's page. And then the Highway Department allocated $7,000 of county maintenance funds for overtime for the Sheriff's Department to do additional enforcement for us. And the plan all along was not to cite milk haulers last, last spring, it was to educate them, and also kind of find people that are interested in participating in the work group. So that was one way we found some good volunteers for the work group. This was our work group, some of the Farm Bureau folks and co-ops and milk haulers, farmers that were there, State Patrol and Sheriff Department were there, some of my staff were there. Just a really good group. And, you know, it wasn't really feasible to reach out to every farmer, every milk caller in the county and ask them to be on a work group. So we felt like we had a pretty good cross-selection of people in the county that were good for this, for this project. So we met twice, June 28th and August 2nd, and really came up with some great information out of those two meetings. First, we wanted to gain an understanding of each other's challenges. We learned a ton about the business of hauling milk, and then we hopefully taught them a couple of things about why we need to protect the valuable infrastructure. And then enforcement was there, and they educated us on, on actual laws of enforcement, you know, since we're doing more of that now. The final result was a compromise of slightly reduced load sizes, in some instances, not even any reduction in load sizes, depending on the truck. We asked them to kind of voluntarily do some strategic hauling, if they could work it out, where they didn't have to be on the posted roads with full loads, maybe they could wait until the, you know, do those full loads towards the end of their route where the roads are better, things like that, but not really enforcing that requirement, just kind of asking for their voluntary compliance. And then we talked about the permit that the county ordinance requires, so we have an oversized weight permit, was our only way of permitting them in the county. The fee for that wasn't specifically discussed, it was discussed that there was a fee, and I apologize that it wasn't made more clear that there is a $100 annual fee per truck. Some other types of postings we use, Class B, these are the highways that are listed there, posted year-round for Class B. They're not meant for heavy truck traffic. So the Class B allows them to haul 60% of a legal load if they're through a truck. So it keeps the heavy loads from, from destroying the pavement, and it allows the local farmers and businesses to get in and out with full loads. We have load-posted bridges, we just had a really major posting change up on Highway M in Towne &amp; Lake Holcomb. We had some gusset plates that connect our bridge truss components that started to buckle from some heavy loads. And so these bridges are getting older, that bridge was built in the 50s, and it wasn't built for the heavy loads that we have now with our logging and our farm equipment. And so we had to reduce the posting down even further from 40 tons down to 30 tons, what we can do some further analysis. So we have 13 county roads that are posted, and 36 overall in the county system, or in the, in the local system, towns and cities and villages. This is our app that's on the Public GIS page, click on the layers on the GIS page, and under Highway Layers, there's the posted bridges, and click on any of these and, and see what the load posting is. And then we have our seasonal weight limits. Everybody calls them road bans, so I can call them road bans tonight. They're on for approximately six weeks each spring. We're protecting the pavement when it's the most vulnerable. So we're using our frost tubes, these plastic tubes full of liquid that go in the ground, we've got multiple ones throughout the county, and we can see what the frost conditions are doing. Right now, we know we've got frost from the surface down to about 60, 60 to 65 inches in most places. What's going to happen is that frost is going to start to melt from the top down, and we'll have a trapped, like a really wet material that has no structural strength beneath the pavement. And that's when we do our seasonal road bans. And if we didn't do those road bans to reduce the weights, the full loads that are allowed the rest of the year would just destroy the pavement. So that's kind of what happened on F, you know, the loads continued when the pavement was vulnerable, and that's what happens. This is our website, where it has a lot of information about road bans. We tell everybody in the spring to check here first. We used to get inundated with calls in the spring from farmers and contractors and everybody trying to find when the road bans are going to go on. Now that most of them know to check here, so the second we make the decision, yep, road bans are going on next Tuesday, or whenever it happens to be, we put an update on here, and people can see that, second we decide that. Also, when we make a decision when they're going to expire. So all the historical dates are on here, they've ranged from late February to mid-March, and then they usually come down mid-April to early May. There's no law or anything that says it has to be six weeks or less. We have had times when we've had to go seven weeks or so, but six weeks is usually a pretty good average. And these were our load-posted, our, our road bans last year. Pretty much everything east of Highway 27 and north of 64, and then we have some heavier soils in Lafayette where we post those. We've been making some improvements on Highway M and N over in Wheaton and Howard, and so we've made the decision not to post those this year. So the milk haulers that use those don't have to worry about a permit this year. So when they come in to get their permits, we talk through some of those things with These are the normal axle weight configurations for a seasonally posted road. So six tons for a single axle, front or back, and then if there's tandem axles, up to 10 tons. And that's a maximum per axle, so you can't just add up all the axles and say you're going to haul that much total, you're looking at each individual axle when they enforce The, the state laws where we have the authority to do this, Class A is in 348, Class B is also there, along with seasonal weight limits, where it talks about... Class B is also there along with seasonal weight limits where it talks about what those are. The authority is in 349, 34915 and 34916. So Class A, this is what a road is unless it's Class B for most of the year. Truckers and everybody with the CDL knows where to find their truck on this chart and how much their truck can weigh total. So the most you would see on there is 80,000 pounds. So a lot of our bridges are posted at 40 tons. That's 80,000 pounds. That's allowing full-size legal Class A loads. What we're doing with the 40-10 posting is we're keeping heavy log trucks off it, keeping manure tankers off it. We're keeping really heavy loads off it if they can't handle it. And then Class B, like I mentioned, is 60% of a Class A. So there's not really a chart for that that I'm aware of, but you just take that other chart, multiply it times 60% and that's what we're trucking haul. If they have a destination for a pickup or a delivery on that route, they can haul full Class A. And so that's one thing to consider. A lot of those routes were getting beat up when the frac sand industry came. They decided back then to put Class B postings on them, kept the frac trucks off them, but allowed the farmers and businesses to get to their destinations on that route. There are three exemptions for seasonal weight limits. Those are statutory and milk is not one of them. Vehicles transporting pumped material from a septic or holding tank have some exemptions. Public utilities have some exemptions if there's a service interruption. And then propane and heating oil deliveries for getting out for heating purposes have exemptions. So that's the reason that we need to permit the milk haulers. They don't have this exemption like the other three do. And those aren't full loads either. They're just enough to get, you know, get their work done that they need to do, but it's not for the loads. So if State Patrol pulls somebody over without a permit, milk hauler or anybody in the spring, they're going to enforce the seasonal road bans. And that's why milk haulers need the permits. So these are the weights that we decided, that my final decision after the meetings was these weights. Kind of hard to see up there, but steer axles will be eight tons. And a normal spring road ban vehicle, it would be six. And then these pusher axles, these are tags in the front of the drive axles. And these are pushers. Those are six tons. And then the tandem drive axles on the back are 16 tons. And those would be only 10 on a seasonal road, on a regular truck. And so we're allowing quite a bit more based on what the milk trucks told us they needed to haul. We talked to the milk haulers and they were telling us the weights of their milk trucks when they're loaded. And that's kind of where we came up with these weights. Some of these trucks are actually able to haul full loads. So it might take a little weight or a little bit of work from them balancing out the air on their vehicles to take weight off the steer axle sometimes and put more on the back and things like that. But the feedback was that they can definitely work with these weights and there wasn't an issue. So to get the notification out and get the permit process started, we sent out a letter to all the registered milk producers in the county. We had talked to DAT cap. There wasn't a list of all the licensed milk haulers in the county that we were able to find, but we felt like reaching out to the farmers and milk producers, asking them to get the letter to their supplier was the safest way to ensure that everybody hauling milk in Chippewa County would find out about this. So we now, as we've gotten more and more milk haulers contacting us, we've built a database. We have a pretty good database of all the milk haulers that we think we know of in the county. But every once in a while, another one trickles in. So as we email and contact these businesses in the future for anything, we'll have a good list to work with in the future. Going to the creameries was brought up. Why we didn't do that, going to where the milk ends up. We heard in the work group that milk was leaving the county. So we didn't know creameries outside of the county. We knew even milk was leaving the state from Chippewa County. And so there was no way of going to the creamery, making sure we captured all the milk haulers. We felt like going to the dairy farmers was the safest way to make sure. Sorry. We had two time blocks that we set aside and asked milk haulers to come in and get help with their permits. That was utilizing the oversized load permit. There is quite a bit of information on that permit that we don't necessarily need for milk haulers. So we're going to be recommending at the next highway committee that we create a different permit just for milk haulers, a much more basic permit with the minimum information that we need from them. A lot less time. We probably did about 10 trucks in these two nights, maybe four different milk haulers came in. So we know there's a lot more left and we've definitely been telling everybody, set up an appointment with our staff, have a one-on-one meeting. We really want to help them through the first permit go around. And then if they continue to use the same trucks in the future, we're going to have a feature that allows them to copy that truck from year to year. So the future is going to be a lot easier for them to complete their permit. Our current ordinance requires $100 for an annual fee for oversized overweight permits. The ones that have came in have gladly paid that. There hasn't been any complaining about it. They've been happy to pay it. And we did tell them that if the ordinance changes and goes to a lesser fee for some reason, we will issue a refund for the difference. And so kind of the summary, highway infrastructure is obviously extremely costly to repair. And we understand that milk needs to be moved 365 days a year. So there's no arguing that. We 100% support that. And we just know that education and enforcement have key roles in this. Make sure everybody's aware of the laws and, you know, we don't want people getting excited for things that they didn't understand. We're trying to get the word out there and educate everybody. But working with the sheriff, the new sheriff to ramp up enforcement, we have some ideas that we're going to be talking about on Thursday with him when I meet with him. Possibly the highway department buying scales for them to use and be able to do better enforcement rather than rely on the State Patrol coming in to weigh people that they stop. And so, and we just know that a partnership with milk haulers is the key. Really, the biggest feedback we've gotten is some of the cost. And so that's what we'll recommend. If we simplify that permit, we can have less staff time involved in reviewing it. And we think we can come up with a better price recommendation for the committee to then bring back to the board as an ordinance change at the next meeting. Now, there was some misinformation in the press. There was a really poorly written online article that had some misinformation about this that kind of set us back and undermined the process. But the Boomer Advance, I urge you, pick up the Boomer Advance and read their November, or January 11th article. They wrote an excellent article that covered the story well. So I'd urge people to read that over what was written online. And we just want to continue to work with milk. Perishable and key part of our economy. So we're going to continue to do that.
Any?
Done.
Any questions from the supervisors?
I have a couple of questions for you, Brian. What happens when a truck breaks down and they have to take a different truck on that route? That typically they wouldn't be on a posted road. Are they going to have to get a permit for that one also?
What we're looking to do, rather than hassle everybody with trying to explain exactly every road that every truck's going to be on, we're looking to permit them for all the posted roads. So each truck issue, say you get these axle weights on any posted road.
But if that truck breaks down and they bring a truck in and maybe goes in another county, they won't be permitted in this county.
Right, they would need another permit.
And if that's on a weekend, then what? Or at night? These things happen. I'm not trying to be difficult. I mean...
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, we're going to return around the permits as fast as we can. And we'll be looking at them on Monday morning, first thing. So hopefully they can switch out another truck that's got a permit for the weekend. And I haven't gotten that from milk haulers so far, but...
Sunday afternoon, when the State Patrol pulls them over, the sheriff, that isn't going to go very far. I think this needs a little more thought yet. And my way of thinking, these permits should be free. There should be no charge on them for milk haulers. And the other question I got is, what are you going to do with Wisconsin egg shavings up on Double D?
Mr. Schmidt, you've got to stay within the scope of the report.
It's spring road bans.
Mr. Schmidt, stay within the scope of the report, please. You're going to have to try, you can't. We can't take every road in the county.
We have a small business on a banned road that was there since 1990. That road wasn't banned until the mid-2000s. He's doing something we want in this county. He's a small business, environmentally friendly. No real issues there. Has some employees that are very happy working there and pays very well. But he needs to get loads in. He comes in from out of Canada, full loads. How is this going to work?
We worked with them last year and we planned to do, hopefully he gives me a call.
He has to give you a call or are you going to give him a call?
Mr. Schmidt, again, keep it within the scope of the report.
It's all spring road ban business.
The exact operations is not... Mr. Peterson?
I just had some concerns. I'm worried that the added routes and the fee are going to be passed on to the farmer and that Chippewa County farmers would be put at a disadvantage to other counties. I don't know. Have you reached out to other counties? Are there fees in other counties?
I did reach out to the surrounding counties. I don't think they have fees. Marathon County has a $50 fee for their permit that they require the milk haulers to get. There's, I reached out to 10 counties, four requiring permits. And one of those is Marathon County that has the fee, but the others don't have a fee right now.
Also, a little worried that some haulers will be pushed down town roads to avoid going on the county roads. Did you reach out to any town chairman at all or town?
We did have the towns association presentation that State Patrol and I went to last, right before last spring's road bans, to tell them what our plans were going forward.
And then, why, for the work group, why didn't you include elected officials, county board, and ask us if any of us want to attend?
I don't know. I guess it was just kind of a, it wasn't a super formal work group. It was just people that we met along the way that were interested in the process and wanted to participate. I don't know. I felt like we had some good stakeholder that brought a recommendation back to the committee. That was kind of what I was trying to do there.
Ryan McGill?
Yeah, Brian, the four milk haulers that contacted me were concerned with the fee. And I think from the premises that they know that no fee ever goes away and it does nothing but increase. The other question that they posed is, is this going to go on to other industries? And their specific question was garbage trucks. They're traveling these same roads every day. You know, are they next? And then who's next after that? And then one added question, are these only payable by credit card?
No, we take a check. Yeah, I don't know what garbage trucks weigh. You know, State Patrol's been doing enforcement in the county now and I don't know of any that got cited yet. So hopefully they're okay to keep hauling within our spring road bans.
Well, a loaded garbage truck would exceed those limits. Depending on where he's on his route, same as a milk truck. He starts out empty, he ends up full at the other end.
Right.
Garbage truck.
Yeah, I haven't heard of anybody getting cited.
You know, their concern is, what's the next industry? And then what's the next fee?
Well, I mean, I heard that, you know, we were picking on the milk haulers by requiring this permit. And really, we're not. We're kind of going the other way with the milk haulers because we're giving them a permit that we're not giving anybody else. But there is the exemptions that are statutory. And if, you know, I'm sure there's going to be some conversations that maybe milk should be exempt. I don't know. I've had legislators talk to me about that and indicate they probably don't want to open that can of worms because it does, there is a whole can of worms if you do that.
Thank you.
Dean Mueller?
Yes, Mr. Kelly, I just have a general question. Do we have any idea about how many trucks overall we're talking about permitting in terms of sheer numbers?
I didn't bring that with me. I would say, I bet we got 20 different companies on our list. You know, the biggest that I've heard of is eight trucks with that company. I don't know that there's any much bigger than that.
Would a ballpark be something like 50, 60 trucks or something, maybe needing permits or more or less?
I just don't have a good handle on it because only a few companies have been in to get truck, get permits. And none of them had more than a few. So I think those are the smallest scale companies. There may be some bigger ones than that. Hopefully if they all get permits, I'll be able to know that.
Sure. Thank you.
Joel?
Well, Dean kind of took my question there, but I guess I got one other question. Said something about the county sheriffs are talking about purchasing scales for carrying around. Is that a pretty high fee that's going to be added into their budget?
Well, that'll be a conversation between the departments because, you know, that's one of those things that the investment might be worth the highway department paying for out of our maintenance budget. Because the savings and road damages by keeping the heavy loads off. They did demo some last spring. They had some vendors come in. The deputy that was kind of fired up to take that role with the county has gotten a promotion now. So we'll be talking with somebody different stepping into that role. And that's when we'll talk about the scales too. But yeah, we're going to have to invest $20,000 plus to get scales if we want to be able to enforce it with our own county deputies.
Okay. And Jason Burdrick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The couple of people that reached out to me on this, they obviously know and everyone wants more fees and things of that nature, but the $100 didn't seem to be the sticky point. The point of confusion was that we have, obviously the state statute gives us authority to do this, but it's governed under a county ordinance. And the ordinance was adopted by a board that fundamentally applied the ordinance different. That this, it was written generically and maybe that was by purpose to remain flexible. But now that we are applying it in a different manner, they thought it would be more than appropriate, the highway committee and the full board not just have reports, but take another vote on it. Just make sure that that county ordinance that we have is written as we want it now that we are applying it in a different manner to a different business sector. That was really the only comment that I got that I really didn't have a good response back to because that does make sense in my head, too.
Hey, when we initially set up the oversized overweight permit, it wasn't done with milk in mind. But that was the only permit that we have available to us to permit them. We did work with corp counsel. We have a new ordinance drafted, another paragraph drafted called Spring Milk Hauling Permit. And recommendation to lower that fee is part of that. So we'll bring it back to the highway committee. I know it's a good idea, what amount of staff time is going to go into one of these permits? It's less than a oversized load, you know, hauling a house or something, so...
Updates are coming.
Updates are coming next meeting for county board.
Thank you.
Mr. Bloomberg?
Thank you, Chair. A couple of issues. Well, one, I actually read the article that was written by Boomer. And there were still a couple of holes in it. It just seemed, almost seems like a circular argument that we're going to get, charge you a fee that we're not going to charge anybody else. And the fee is going to be basically paid for highway time or the department time. So at some level, I mean, it's not a good optic for the county. Because secondly, we're the only county that's doing this. So it just doesn't look good. And because it doesn't look good, I think there's going to be many tales that are going to get told that are not going to make a bunch of people happy. And if you do a lot of speculation on this, many small dairy farmers that... And if you do a lot of speculation on this, many small dairy farmers that, that I'm aware of are concerned that this is what's gonna be starting to, this is just the beginning of an effort to force them out because they're gonna be at the end of a road with a longer driveway and they're gonna go across the county using the county's roads. And this is gonna be one more step to force them out of business. I know it's only a $100 fee, but at some point in time, they're gonna argue that they're gonna end up paying that fee. Secondly, if milk should be exempt, instead of the county really, well, at some hand, you know, level, I, I appreciate the fact that the county's trying to take this on, but we're taking it on alone. And if milk should be exempt, maybe we should be sending a letter back to the state for them to readdress should milk be exempt. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay, I have one, one question. So by understanding, this is an oversized loading permit system, correct?
Yeah.
And so that would pertain to any trucking company. You say it would be a garbage trunk company if they want to, I don't know if you wanna call it an exemption, but a permit to correspond to what we're doing for that, that would be the same permit system, correct?
Right.
Okay. So it's not just for milk haulers, it's for any trucking company that would want to have those considerations with that permit system?
Yes, but we very, very rarely issue those in the spring to anybody. It's gotta be a pretty good emergency to, to issue a permit in the spring like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is way out of my area of expertise. I'm a kid from the suburbs and I know very little about milk trucking. But just point of clarification, if any truck is over the limit, they have to get a permit regardless of what they're hauling, correct?
Right.
For it to be in violation of the, of the road bans. Again, this may be a stupid comment, but is it po, is, is it possible for a milk truck not to get a permit to be under those limits and to haul that weight that exempt them from having to get a permit? Is that like an end around?
I could show you, I mean, if we went back to the slide of the, of this chart. I'm not a milk hauler, but I don't think they would haul much milk at these weights.
Okay, that's my question is, it, it would basically be ridiculous.
It wouldn't be.
So they couldn't haul, so they basically have to be over the limit to haul.
Right, they would have to be, they have been over the limit all along. We're just permitting it now.
Okay, so, okay, so that, that would answer my second question. So they have been over the limit, just haven't been enforcing.
Right.
The road bans. But that goes for anybody. If anybody is stopping, they're over the limit, they're gonna receive potential citation be the sheriff's department or state patrol.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none? Thank you.
Oh, wait.
Whoops, excuse me. Jim, go ahead.
Have you known any other counties? Can the state patrol give us any statistics on counties that are, milk haulers getting fined for overloads or on the road bans?
I don't have that information, but I could try to get it from the committee, for the committee.
And then the other question would be, on average, how a truck generally services so many farmers in a week? How many, what's the average truck, how many farmers does he service? So if he services 20 farms, that comes out to $5 per farm if, if the hauler passes it on. Are, are any other counties having issues with their road bans in the spring?
Yeah. Yeah, we have 11 counties in our district and we meet monthly. And it's a pretty hot topic in the spring, what everybody's doing and what's happening in their counties. It's, it's nothing unique to Chippewa County.
And then I guess I wanna quiet, we are not requiring the haulers to get it. They can let the chips fall wherever they may, correct? But the state patrol, you, you go on the road bans and.
Right. I think the safest thing, you know, we're talking about lowering the fee and everything. So I think it's really the safest thing is to get the permit and kinda taking your chances if you don't.
That's all.
All right. Anyone else before the, we gotta keep looking here to see if a button is set. Okay, thank you, Brian. Then we will move on to general reports, tourism council report and chamber update. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jackie Booth. I'm the tourism director at the Chippewa Falls Chamber and oversee our umbrella of Go Chippewa County. I wanted to bring in Allison.
My name is Allison Wosneski and I'm the new Chippewa Falls Chamber president all of about three months, but I'm not counting. I did ask for us to be put on the agenda just to introduce myself. I think Jackie has been here, but probably not for a while as you guys get back to normal. So I did ask to be on the agenda just to introduce myself and Jackie. Typically Jackie presents to the economic development committee twice a year, I believe, is what the normal is. So this isn't, won't be a normal occurrence unless we're requested. That would really be our avenue. Just wanted to thank you for letting us come and be on the agenda. And just as the new president of the Chippewa Falls Chamber, my door is open. Stop by our visitor center and the chamber office or give me a call, shoot me an email. I've met with Randy a couple of times already, just to get familiar. I was at the chamber previously, so some of your faces look familiar, but some don't. I was in, actually in Jackie's role as the tourism director for nine years, seven years ago. So don't do the math. So look forward to seeing you guys as the county board or just as people in the community as some, and some of you as chamber members as well. So really just wanna introduce ourselves to you. Jackie can talk a little bit about the numbers that she has here in her handout.
Yeah, so I really just wanted to give a global representation of our marketing. You'll see that we touch every avenue and every platform of marketing Chippewa County for seasonal approach. Right now, of course, well, before Monday morning at 8:00 AM, snowmobile was a hot, hot number for us. But you'll see, and you can review this as well. But again, we really try to storytell what we have in our backyard. Our council is made up of members throughout the county. So we have great representation of Chippewa County, even though we're located right here in Chippewa Falls. And our travel guide, both print and digital, our website and social media platforms, again, under Go Chippewa County, put us on not only a national level, but keep us top of mind for those visitors that are looking to spend some really good money here in our county. We call that good money. They spend the money and then they go home. So tourism is alive and well in our county. And of course, we look for great partnerships throughout the year and structure our marketing plans around not only what our competition is doing, but also communities of our size throughout the, the country as well. So I'm happy to answer any questions or have some fun reading tonight.
Any questions?
Wonderful.
Lighting up, so thank you.
Yeah, wonderful. Thanks, guys.
Alrighty, we will move on to business items, resolution 423.
Resolution number 4 dash 23, resolution to reauthorize payment of American Rescue Plan Act funding to Blumer Telephone Company for a broadband expansion project in the towns of Eagle Point, Lafayette and Tilden. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chippewa County Board of Supervisors does hereby authorize the payment of $295,232 of ARPA funds to Blumer Telephone Company for the completion of a broadband expansion project in the towns of Eagle Point, Lafayette and Tilden as set out above and in the attached Blumer Telco broadband expansion proposal, December 2022. And be it further resolved that Blumer Telephone Company provide a report to the county board at the December 12, 2023 meeting on the project and how it benefited citizens of Chippewa County. Forwarded to the county board by the executive committee.
Okay, I would seek a motion to approve.
Supervisor Hunt.
Supervisor Hunt, and then a second.
Supervisor later.
Discussion.
Before Travis comes up and kinda gives you some more details, I just wanna give a history so we're kinda on the same page. So if you go to the explanation, statement explanation for this, the county board allocated $500,000 for a Blumer Telephone and for an Antara, which will be the next resolution. The money got broken up between their two projects. So each site received 541,000, 541,000, wow, $541.71 for each location. Blumer Telephone was able to get some funding out of the original 328,000. They were able to utilize 33,586 for that. So the new ask is for the 129 locations, not the 607 that originally was asked for. And then if you divide that by the 295,232 that they're asking for, then their, the per location is up to 2,288. So I'll have Travis come up and give details.
I thank you for having me here tonight. And kinda recap here, the slide here is just kinda saying the same thing Randy did. Just kinda breaks down the different locations and how many homes were in the original project. Yeah, did get the Hallie Seymour one. And so here's what we're proposing. Since we have materials and labor available and all these people that still need broadband, what can we still do with the money and the, the labor we have available this year that was kinda allocated for these projects? So we found 129 locations, 22 miles of fiber. You can see the cost estimates around 800,000 and we're willing to put in half a million portages. The target maps, areas we're looking at are kinda spurs off of the original builds from this last year that got missed in the mapping. So the, the mapping that was provided back in 2021 from the PSC took the broadband map based off of census blocks. So if somebody in your census block had access to broadband, your block was marked off as good, even though it could be one person, it could be across the river, depends how the census block was drawn. So that's how a lot of these homes got missed. So what we're trying to do is get those plot in that same vicinity and finish that area off and move on. And basically, we've heard from a lot of these people, once you start putting fiber in and all their neighbors get the flyers, but they got missed, you hear about it and you hear about it and you hear about it, you know, and multiple times, you know, so. And sometimes your representative hears about it and calls you or emails you. So it's a hot topic that people really want this, it's a need in today's society. So the map of Lafayette here, if you can see the blue corner here, that is an area of Lafayette that is left, that does not have broadband access. So our project area that we will be building up this year with the funding received from the state PSC in Chippewa County, Eau Claire County and the towns will be in the Maroon area. So what we'd like to do is finish off that blue area while we have the construction crews there. We can work more efficiently, make better use of our permits and our materials and kinda get this area done and move on. So there's 56 locations in there, seven and a half miles of fiber. And again, we'll be in the area, so we can, we can work through this efficiently and, and get something checked off as done. In the Tilden Eagle Point, you can see in orange, that's the Blumer Telephone build, you know, from our ILEC or from the previous grant in 2018, 19. The green area is what we built this summer and are splicing and actually hooking up right now. We've hooked up the town hall here in Eagleton last week. And so these are just little spurs that got, you know, marked as ineligible. So we'd like to come in and catch those. And, you know, this area here has some broadband access, but the edges don't. And that's kinda this whole map, you know, discussion of why they got missed. And then we've worked with the Tilden Township. They did commit $15,000 of ARPA money, which I know doesn't sound like a lot, but when you only get 150,000, they've already committed over 80% of their ARPA funds. And I kinda got a verbal commitment from them at that meeting that, hey, we want you to have all our ARPA funds and we wanna get our township fibered up and get broadband. So they are committed for the next round, you know, when we have another state PSC grant that we can try to get more homes. So they're definitely a committed partner in this process. So you can see this map here where we have an east and a west area. So this Q and S section is kind of a, a hole with nothing in it. And so we can access it from our fiber right here. And then this west section is, again, these areas missed by the census blocks. So there's 61 homes in that build. And those are the three different areas that we'd be looking to try to fill in. Any questions? I appreciate you guys' commitment to the broadband in the, the past and look forward to, to keep building broadband in the town, in the county.
Thank you. Okay, then we will, are you gonna say something, Randy? Okay, then we will call the vote. Green to approve, red to disapprove.
21 yes, 0 no.
Okay, resolution 523.
Resolution 5 dash 23, resolution to reauthorize payment of American Rescue Plan Act funding to Antara LLC for a broadband expansion project in the towns of Cleveland and Ruby. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chippewa County Board of Supervisors does hereby authorize the payment of $171,182 of ARPA funds to Antara LLC for the completion of broadband expansion project in the towns of Cleveland and Ruby as set out above and in the attachments. And be it further resolved that Antara LLC provide a report to the county board at the December 12, 2023 meeting on the project and how it benefits, benefited citizens of Chippewa County. Forwarded to the county board by the executive committee.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve?
Supervisors approve, motions approved.
Is there a second?
Official second.
Discussion.
I'll give a little history here before Ryan comes up. Again, this was part of the ARPA allocation that the county board did of the 500,000. The original request was for 316 locations at 171,182. Brings it to the same dollar amount, the 541.72, 71 cents. They're requesting, then requested this reauthorization for 69 positions or 69 locations at the same dollar amount, which is at $2,480.90. But they do have an opportunity to maybe get a PSC grant. And so the dollar amount would stay the same. Chippewa County would still allocate the 171,182, but they'd be looking at if they would receive that grant to get 208 locations. Then it would reduce that dollar amount from the 2, 2,400 roughly to about $823 a location. So if you wanna come up, Ryan, and explain the details?
Yeah. So like as, is it okay if I stand over here?
You guy be an ostrol.
Okay. So, yeah, that's a great opening for this. So our original plan was to have these 69 homes in the blue areas to go out with that, with that money that you guys presented. But we thought since the PSC came out with this 14 million dollar option, what a great opportunity to have Chippewa County partner with Antara and expand this further. And this is actually due February 22nd. So we're jamming all this stuff together and hopefully we'll get this grant and we'll serve the 208 more communities. But as mentioned, we have this place, this is actually a 3.1 mile spread between, this is Ruby and this is Holcomb. I did drive this stretch. It is actually, because we had some issues with this before. It's 3.1 miles and later on I have a, a map too that shows the pets and metered pets and the houses, everything like that. So that was actually correct. It was just actually spread between Holcomb and Ruby. So going forward, we have this 230 street, which has six customers on it. Highway 78, this extension has 28 customer subs on it. This area has 18 subs. This nice piece right here has 75 subs and that, you know, had some issues or actually solved some problems with Highway 78, 178 that we had discussed earlier prior and stuff like that. So then we moved north of that. We have 37 subs that connect 178 on here through the southern part of Cleveland. And then if you scroll down a little bit too, we had this little plant on 80th Avenue that has 21 people. And, you know, and we're building this up because our, our extension's basically off our current network there. It's built all the way through there. So we're just kind of extending out our bases and gonna build upon these points as well. So we're just kind of extending out our basis and going to build upon these points as well. So we thought it was a great plan and with the state money, this is what we can do. And like he said, drop the county cost per sub from 2,400 to 822 per sub on the county. So we're looking forward to turning that in February 22nd with your guys' support and moving forward with it.
Any questions? Supervisor Steele?
Ryan, in your proposal of ours, why have you got Highway W, Ruby, and all that, and that's not on here?
This is Highway W right here. This is 3.1 miles between, this is Ruby and then this is Holcomb. It's like two miles of Holcomb and one mile of Ruby.
Yeah, okay. But it's not Holcomb, it's Estella.
Okay. Part of the town of, it's both of them.
Estella is on both sides of W. And the last mile, only on one side is Ruby.
Right. So, but it's in Chippewa County too, so that's kind of what...
Yeah, but our, our, our resolution that we're supposed to pass says Wheaton and Ruby.
Cleveland.
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 And then?
Cleveland.
Cleveland and Ruby.
Cleveland's over here, and then we got it.
Cleveland and Ruby. We're doing two miles on Estella. It should be put in there.
It's not the title.
Well, I just heard those two towns. Is the one down M going into Arnold, is that going to be done this year?
Yes, correct. We didn't get the fiber last year and this year we do have the fiber for it, so yes.
So for clarification, in the resolution, those are in there, the clerk reads the title, so that's why those other towns weren't mentioned, but they are in the resolution. So if you look at the social, you'll see it.
I did not hear Estella, that's why I brought it up.
Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, then we will call the vote. To approve, press your green button. Disapprove, press red.
Hang on, one second.
Just, she's loading the machine. Okay. We're good to go. Okay, resolution passes. Resolution 623.
Resolution 6-23, Resolution to Authorize the Use of American Rescue Act Funding for the Contaminant Mitigation in Residential Wells Project. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chippewa County Board of Supervisors does hereby approve the utilization of 250,000 of the American Rescue Plan Act funding to the Land Conservation and Forest Management Department for the contaminant mitigation in residential wells project in 2023 through 2024. And be it further resolved that these funds be transferred from the American Rescue Plan Act Fund 235 to the LCFM Groundwater Study Account 100-52-57418 on at least an annual basis and upon completion of the contaminant mitigation residential wells project forwarded to the county board by the executive committee.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve?
I approve.
Official beat you to the bunch. Okay, so how about a second? Boomer for the second.
Yep, before Linda gives kind of the details, just quick history again. Originally, the request for ARPA was for 500,000. The board ultimately passed that, they, you guys, okay, 250,000 for last year, and at the beginning of this year, the request could come back for the other 250,000. So that's what this is.
Linda Schweickert, Director of the Land Conservation Forest Management Committee, or Committee, Department. Been here too long tonight. Coming to you for the, the second half of the nitrogen remediation project. The first half I reported on earlier was for the cover crop program. In addition to utilizing the ARPA funds for the cover crop program, we also promoted a program re, remodeled by Wisconsin DNR and refunded by Wisconsin DNRs, the well contamination, not well contamination, well compensation program. So anyone who wishes to either put treatment in their homes or re-drill a well, they can apply for these funds. In the past, it was underfunded and the criteria to be eligible for this program was very low. And they increased the funds to 10 million in 2022, as well as decreased the limits of nitrogen nitrates in the groundwater. It was 40 nitrates parts per million, down to 10. And if there was bacteria, you had to prove that it came from livestock, they eliminated that requirement. So now many more people are eligible for this program. So we did a major outreach. Any wells that tested higher than 10 parts per million in the last five years, we sent out a letter promoting this program, as well as sending out a letter to the plumbers and well drillers in Chippewa County, letting them know that people may be calling them for cost estimates and assistance on filling out these applications. After that, we received about 25 to 30 people in our office looking for water test kits. You need two, two tests showing 10 parts per million within two years. So people were coming in to retest their wells, and we were giving them assistance on filling out these applications and then putting them in touch with our plumbers list. I reached out to DNR a week or so ago to see if anybody from Chippewa County, number one, has applied, number two, got approved. At this point, nobody has been approved, but three applications from Chippewa County are in their department. And then I asked how much of the 10 million had been allocated, and only about 600,000 has been allocated. So there's plenty of funds in this program still, and they were very happy to hear that we were promoting this program amongst our citizens. So we intend to continue to do outreach to let the landowners know that there is this, this cost share program in addition to what we have here in Chippewa County. The, the second part of the ARPA funds is looking at remediation. The first part is we're trying to find solutions, long-term solutions for the nitrate problem in the groundwater. And so we split it in half, and the second half here is going to be looking at trying to provide clean drinking water in the short term. We understand it took a while for the nitrates to get into the water, and it will, any solution we come up with will take a while to get the nitrates out. So we know we still need to provide something in the interim for the landowners who have wells that are tested higher than 10 parts per million to provide a clean source of drinking water. So our main premise for this, the 250,000 that I'm asking for today, is looking at well refill stations for community areas in the high nitrate testing area. So looking at mostly in the western part of Chippewa County, looking at finding either existing wells that are currently being tested by DNR for this purpose, and if these do not exist, looking at drilling wells in the community to provide local sources for people to come and refill water for their drinking and cooking. We did have our first ad hoc committee meeting last Thursday, bringing the groundwater specialist for the state of Wisconsin, a hydrogeologist, Wisconsin DNR, and the town of Wheaton and the town of Eagle Point, as they have two of the existing wells that are a possibility for this, this outreach. A really good, really good meeting, really good questions. Basically, this was kind of a feasibility meeting, looking to see what additional information we're going to need to make this decision. And so that's what this next month will be, is everyone going back and getting this additional information to come back in March to see where we can go from there. In addition to the, the refill stations, we're also looking at additional testing. Kevin Messerick, who has presented to the committee several times doing our groundwater study in Chippewa County, is interested in seeing, number one, there's, there's a study going on right now, and so those results should come out this spring, and looking at seeing where we need additional testing that maybe we're lacking to know where the nitrates are. And then he's very interested in then helping us with the outreach and getting the information out there of why people need to test their wells and what the information is coming back from their test results. Several of these people who came in for additional testing for this well compensation grant had wells testing 15, 20 parts per million, and were asking, is this bad? So even though they had tested, even though they got the results, maybe the information, maybe someplace that we can fill in is letting them know if it's bad and why it's bad and what can be done from there. So we definitely want to do more outreach and working with Kevin Messerick will definitely be a plus to our program. And then in the end, working with the UW extension and local producers in the part, the local farmers have formed what's called a producer-led watershed group, and they're looking at finding ways as well to affect the, the nitrate leaching issue in the community. And so working with them and trying to find other solutions that will help prevent this from happening in the future. Any questions?
Yeah, I was kind of shocked, I was talking to a farmer, told me that they put a reverse osmosis machine because the nitrate level was so high on the farm in my district. And I thought that also it was the west and south. When you're talking about the grants for helping the people in their wells that are like that, I was wondering if you've already done it, but I wonder if they could turn some of their bills in or an avenue to get some of their money back that they spent themselves.
So I don't know the extreme details of the grant program, but it's something worth looking into, it wouldn't hurt them to ask.
Yeah, because, you know, I mean, I, I was amazed to think that there was one up there in Holcomb like that, because I was always on the other side, but there is. Okay, I'll talk to them, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Last minute, George.
On the wells that are, have the heavier contamination, are they, what I've noticed over here, there's shallower wells, a lot of sand points are still being used outside the lake in those areas. So are mainly it's the shallower wells that are being more of a problem than the deeper wells?
So that is one question that we asked Kevin Messerick, who is doing the groundwater study for 2022, is to include if he was examining the depth of the wells, and he said he is. And so he will be providing that information. It's my suspicion, but what I was told when looking at the groundwater, the aquifer for Chippewa County, it is all one aquifer. There are some impervious layers here and there, but the aquifer flows pretty much through all the soil pores. But they did say that the nitrates just might not be down deeper, so it might take them longer to infiltrate down deeper, so it would be diluted down deeper. But the issue of going deeper, sometimes you run into the iron. So you, you eliminate the nitrates, but now, but now you get into the iron, which is staining your fixtures, staining your clothes. And so, yes, you can drink the water, but now it's got an aesthetic issue to it as well. So we're trying to find a, maybe a happy medium.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? None, then we will call the vote. Those to approve, press green. Disapprove, press red. Okay. Resolution passes. Item number four, Amendment 2021, 2026 ARPA plan.
I'm sorry.
Do I hear a motion to approve? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Cockins, Mr. Cockins beat you to the bunch here. Discussion.
Thanks. Just to give you an update on this, obviously each time a resolution is passed, we have to give a, an update, or have to update the ARPA plan. Again, the resolutions push the ARPA plan, the ARPA plan doesn't determine the resolutions. I forgot to put on the, the ARPA plan when we, when you approved the resolution for the WPPA on the bottom there in yellow, so we added that one too. But otherwise, it's the two you passed tonight on top for the telcos, and then the one for the mitigation. And then also, I'd just like to, I know you guys see this a lot, but I just want to point out that currently there's only 274,103 dollars not accounted for in our 12.5 million dollar plan. So pretty much everything's accounted for. Again, the kind of outstanding one is the public firearm range, that we're working through that and hope to have that completed this summer. So we are working through that plan. But, so there's only 274,000 left that have not decided what to do with.
Seeing none, then we will call the vote. To approve, press green. Disapprove, red. Okay. Amendment passes. Move on to Resolution 723.
Resolution number 7-23, Resolution to Authorize the Sale of Tax Deed Lands Acquired by Foreclosure of Tax Certificates and REM. Now therefore be it resolved that all of the above-mentioned tax deed lands acquired in 2022 by the county pursuant to the above referenced judgment in REM 2022 number one, for foreclosure of tax be offered for sale pursuant to the provisions of Section 75.69 Wisconsin statutes and Section 2-353 of the Chippewa County Quote of Ordinances, recommended for approval by the Planning and Zoning Committee.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve? Okay, heard. Motion, Boomer, second. Discussion.
I'll turn this over to Doug, our planning and zoning director.
Usually I get to sit out there, it's a little cooler. I had to sit back tonight, so it's warm back there. So I won't make this long. Obviously, we have a tax deed program in Chippewa County, and it's for individuals who, for whatever unknown reason to us, don't pay their property taxes. And after they get several years behind paying their taxes, then we step in with the tax in REM process and go to the courts and get approval to have the property transferred into the county's name. And then it goes to the county planning and zoning committee for them to review the list and send the list up to you. So that is what is in front of you tonight, there's six properties on there. Of the six, there's two of them that do have some type of structures on them in varying stages of being habitable. And then we have four other vacant pieces of property that are on there as well. If approved tonight, we will go out and get these ready to roll in regards to having them sold. We will put notices in the paper, we'll get a... sold. We will put notices in the paper. We'll get a fair market value for those properties. And then we'll go to accept bids on those properties from those individuals or from individuals. If they are sold, the proceeds from that, we take out all of our costs that we incur for taking the property and then selling the property. We also take all the back taxes out of it as well. Now, in 2021, there was a change in the state formula. I won't go through that whole one formula because it's a little, reads like calculus to me, but it's a lot of if and then statements. But right now, we will go back through this and take out all those costs. And then any monies that are still received on that property that would not go back to the county or those taxes, if there's lien holders on there, we have to seek them out and ask them if they want their money back. If there are no lien holders on it, then we try to track down that previous property owner and tell them, here, here's the remaining funds off of the sale of this property. If they do not contact us within five years, then we are able to keep that balance or keep those, those monies on there. Some of these properties, if you can imagine by the time that we get them, they are either beat up. I'll be frank, they, you know, look like dumping grounds. The houses and structures are, are beat up in some situations. Other ones are just vacant pieces of land that, one, they, we don't know where they moved. It's a responsibility of property owner to make sure we know where you are so we can send them the Merry Christmas every year card. If they don't, if we can't find them, they don't pay their bills, obviously we take it. In this situation, if we have those monies left over and we can't find them, then we take that money and put it back into the program. Now, this program was originally set up, just to give you an idea, when I started the program, I think it was in 2012, we were able to keep about 50% of the proceeds and put those into a fund, and that helped us clean up some of these properties. With the new formula, this is our first round because we did have COVID and there was some legislation in there that kind of prohibited us from taking it at that point in time, or we felt that the legislation would get us maybe into the court systems, which we really want to stay out of. So in the past, we were able to sell. If we had money left over, we were able to keep 50% of that, put it into a fund and help pay for cleaning up some of the other properties. Right now, we just don't know what that, what we are going to get out of the value in some of these properties. Because as you can imagine, if a property is really beat up, has a lot of garbage and/or miscellaneous materials laying around it, we do step in and clean that up because we feel, one, it's a responsibility of the county to clean that up and get it out of there. Secondly, that costs money. If we don't have the money to do it, the program kind of falls away. The good thing is, is that years ago, we set this program up so we could have those funds available to us to offset some of those costs. It just depends on how many properties we actually have to clean up and how much that cost is. And as you can imagine, everything goes up. So I really don't know what the costs are going to be on these. If we come out at zero on these, taking these properties, cleaning them up, and at the end of the day, it's a zero impact to the, to the fund, then we're, we won. But somewhere in the future, we'll have to sit down and take a look at this program and see if there's other opportunities for funding to keep these up. Because the last thing that some individuals want is to live next to a piece of property that has a bunch of junk on there. Most people don't, some people don't mind. But there is a, a value to this program. And unfortunately, that involves us having to step in when they don't pay their taxes and take over that property and then get it to someone who will. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be willing, hopefully I can answer them.
Any questions? Okay. Seeing none, then we will call the vote. Those to approve, press green. Disapprove, Whenever you're ready.
Twenty-one, yes, zero, no.
Okay, passes. Resolution 823.
Resolution 8-23, resolution to request that the state revise the current real estate transfer fees revenue sharing formula to a 50-50 share with counties. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chippewa County Board of Supervisors does hereby urge the state of Wisconsin to revise the real estate transfer fee share formula to again allow Wisconsin counties to retain 50% of all real estate transfer fees collected with 50, with 50% to be remitted to the state. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to Governor Tony Evers, all members of the state legislature representing Chippewa County, the Wisconsin Counties Association, and all other Wisconsin counties, forwarded to the county board by the executive committee.
I hear a motion to approve.
Later makes the motion.
Is there a second?
Still a second.
Discussion.
Malina Reddinger-Diems will explain the details on this one.
Good evening. Last year, resolutions started floating around from different counties where they were proposing this resolution. And I just was waiting to see how the other counties were going to handle this. So I just felt like, seeing that I was on the Wisconsin Counties Association legislative agenda for this year, I wanted to bring it to you guys to make you informed of it. So prior to 1981, our transfer tax was based off of 10 cents per hundred. In 1981, they changed it from being that 10 cents per hundred and a 50-50 split to be 30 cents per hundred with an 80-20 split. So what's being proposed is the counties are wanting to urge the state to go back to a 50-50 split, since the counties are the ones that are burdened in collecting all this money. And it would also help the county in additional revenue. So just to understand, for the last five years, we have, Chippewa County has collected 5.4 million dollars in transfer fees, of which we have retained just a little over 1 million. That's under the current split. So if we kept it going under the old split, we would have gotten 907,000. So we did gain an additional 188,000 in the last however many years since 1981. But if we were able to get that switched back to the 50-50 split, Chippewa County would have gained an additional 1.6 million in the last five years. So may not be quite that high with COVID. You know, the, the prices inflated a little bit, so we did get substantial amount in the last two years. So we, I don't know what, if that's going to hold. It'll decrease. But just wanted to make you guys aware of it. It's up to you. There are 24 counties that have passed resolutions. 24 have opted not to. 11 are in discussion with their committees or county boards, and 12 did not respond to our survey. So any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Have you gotten any feedback from the counties that opted not to do this as to why they're leaning in that direction?
I haven't heard. There's been some discussions, but I haven't heard as to why they're not. Really, it's just more of a resolution to encourage the state to do it. Us passing this resolution really isn't going to make a change, but it's just, you know, urging the state to do it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any situation that would benefit Chippewa County to stay with the current distribution?
Anytime you ask for more money from the state, they could take more money from us. So that is a, that is a possibility. You know, if, if the counties, you know, are encouraging the state to do it, one of the options they could say is we're going to now take 100% of it instead of you getting 50%. So it is a risk. I don't think it's all that high, but the risk is there.
Any other questions? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, then we will call the vote. Be in favor, press green. To oppose, press red. Okay, passes. Resolution 923.
Resolution number 9-23, resolution to authorize the purchase of Truenark handheld narcotics analyzers for the sheriff's department with opioid litigation settlement funds. Now therefore be it resolved that the county board does hereby authorize the Chippewa County Sheriff's Department to use opioid litigation settlement funds to purchase four Truenark handheld narcotics analyzers to help reduce opioid abuse in Chippewa County, forwarded to the county board by the executive committee.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve?
Due to work, motions to approve.
Is there a second?
One second.
Discussion.
Thank you. I'll just kind of give the opioid abandonment mitigation part of this, and then the chief deputy will explain the need and what they're looking to purchase. So as you know, we had the first settlements of this. We talked a lot about this, but we did receive upfront payments that we weren't anticipating from one of the organizations. So currently, we have a little over $300,000 in that account. This is something that does qualify under the use for opioid funds. So I'll let the chief deputy explain the reason.
Good evening. I'm Chief Deputy Kurt Dutton from the sheriff's office. The handheld Truenark analyzer, it's about the size of my cell phone, a little bit thicker than this. It'll be used in the field, back in the jail, and by our investigations division. What this does is it shoots a laser into an unknown substance, and it has a library right now of 498 different drugs in the system, and it can tell the officer exactly what that unknown substance is. And it has the ability to shoot through plastic, shoot through glass, which is a great benefit to us because the officer doesn't have to handle the substance if it's in a container to be inadvertently or accidentally overdosed. And I'll get into a little bit more of that in a few minutes here. If you scroll down a little bit in resolution, I'm going to give you some statistics from the West Central Drug Task Force. You'll see in 2016, they had zero seizures of fentanyl. Fentanyl is what we're most concerned about right now, and I'll get into the reason why shortly. For about four years, you'll see that there wasn't much change. In 2019, they had 1.1 grams. That changed in 2020. You can see that they had 83 grams Cs of, of fentanyl in our region for West Central Drug Task Force. Last year, 352 grams of fentanyl seized. Just last Friday, on a traffic stop, they seized 25 grams of pure fentanyl on a traffic stop. Let me get a little bit into the lethality of, of fentanyl. It takes approximately 2.5 milligrams of fentanyl to potentially kill someone. Doing the math, if you got one gram of fentanyl, that can kill approximately 400 people. Looking at what we seized last year, that could potentially kill 140,000 people. That's just last year. The seizure that they did on Friday, that has a potential to kill 10,000. So how much is 2.5 milligrams? It's about three grains of salt. It's, it's very, very tiny. Other substances out there are more deadly. Car fentanyl, approximately one grain of salt will kill somebody. I encourage everyone, you don't have to do it right now, but I want you to watch, write this down and watch this two-minute video. Tavarus, Florida, Officer, Fentanyl Overdose. And I'll spell Tavarus, T-A-V-A-R-E-S. I have a sneaky suspicion the word fentanyl is going to come up again at some point. You need to watch this video to see how deadly fentanyl is. This officer did a traffic stop. She found in someone's front pocket a bindle, which is a basically a folded-up piece of paper that they hold drugs in. She suspected there was drugs in there. She started to open it up. She realized there was drugs in there. This is all on body cam video. She immediately tried to close it up, and the wind blew up in her face. She immediately fell back and started gasping for air. Her partners grabbed the Narcan, and they gave her three doses of Narcan to save her. And you can see her struggling. It's very difficult to watch. That's how deadly fentanyl is. We've had fentanyl mailed into the jail on two separate occasions. We've had, as you can see, the seizure amounts there are, are unbelievable. This isn't going anywhere. Turn on any news station you want, you're going to hear the word fentanyl. So we're asking for these devices. And again, as, as Randy stated, this is going to come from the, the opioid settlement litigation. So that's a tremendous opportunity for us to get these devices out in the streets out there where officers can use it and not be inadvertently exposed.
Any questions?
Thank you, Chair. Deputy Chief, do you, have you heard, I don't know, maybe you've had discussions with corporate counsel on this, but does that Narcan device assist in establishing probable cause or tribute?
As of right now, that cannot be used. You're talking about presumptive evidence. As of right now, cannot be used in court. It's for us to identify what we're dealing with.
So it's more of a field testing?
Correct. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So obviously, along with this, because it's a detection device, right?
Correct.
What we're going to do is make sure that obviously all of our law enforcement, you know, personnel have that training so that they know when to use said device.
We've already had our first round of training, and it became very clear to us with the first round of training that only certified people are going to use this device because you have the potential to start fires with a laser. So it's not going to be, we're just going to hand somebody and say, figure it out. So yeah, we, we've got that under control.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
We're having some technical difficulties, but.
No, no, it's fine. It's fine. I'm censored by a buzzer. Deputy Dutton, it's my understanding that you've also spoken with the Eau Claire Police Department, and they've had success with this as well.
Yes.
Can you speak to that just a little?
Again, we had an officer come to the legal law committee. I can't remember his name. He is with West Central Drug. And he told us of an instance where they went into a house, and again, we're talking small amounts that you can be exposed to on the skin where you can overdose immediately. And they found some powder on a dresser table. They looked at it, they field tested it with what they had, which is, which is basically handheld little kits, and it didn't detect anything. So they didn't think anything of it. They came back the next day later when they, when they searched the whole house, and they brought their Truenark that, that we're asking to get, and they placed it on there, and it detected for fentanyl. Somebody could have very easily, I've been on searches, he's been on searches, you've been on searches, you can easily accidentally rub your elbow on something like that. That would have been a prime example where you'd want to know that's fentanyl to take care of that. So nobody accidentally inadvertently leans on it or rests their elbow on it while they're doing a search.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
We will then call the vote. To approve, press green. Disapprove, red.
Twenty-one, yes, zero, no.
Okay, resolution passes. Okay, we move to resolution 1023.
Resolution number 10-23, resolution to authorize compensation and mileage reimbursement for up to 100 days of committee meetings in 2023. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chippewa County Board of Supervisors does hereby authorize that the number of days that supervisors are entitled to compensation for attending committee meetings is increased to 100 days per year for 2023. And be it further resolved that the compensation for all days for service on committees over 30 days in 2023 shall be compensated in the same manner as the first 30 days of committee meetings were compensated, including reimbursement for mileage pursuant to section 2-71 of the Chippewa County Code of Ordinances, forwarded to the county board by the executive committee.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
Erickson.
Okay, Erickson approves. Howl, second. Okay. Discussion.
This is a yearly resolution that we have to do if you want to get paid if you attend more than three meetings. So statutory, not sure why, but that's what we have to do.
Any questions? Okay, this will require a two-thirds vote. So we'll call the vote at this time then. Press green to approve, red to disapprove. Press green to approve. Red to disapprove.
Twenty yes, one no.
Okay, resolution passes. Move on to number nine. Pardonance to men, chapter two, division three. I need a motion to approve.
Officially, the motion to approve.
And then a second?
Waiter.
And discussion?
Yeah, explained everything really on the first reading, but again, real brief. This is to remove the emergency management director as a county department head, and then also to designate that position as a county head of emergency management, which is required in the statute. It's only a change.
Any questions? Seeing none, then we will call the vote. Green to approve. Red to disapprove. You're ready.
Twenty-one yes, zero no.
Okay. To advance primary care clinic health reimbursement account. Excuse me. We'll need a motion to approve.
I'm going to ask.
Or wait a minute. This is first reading, excuse. Or wait a minute.
Yep.
We got to go back. So do we do the request for second or until afterwards? So to make this timely, I would seek a motion to suspend the rules and waive the second reading. Pfizer-Howell makes that motion. Second? Second. Second by Schmidt. Now a motion.
Nope.
Nope. Well, you got to read it.
Get a vote.
Oh, we got to vote on motion. Okay.
The vote on the, this is a vote for the waiving of the first reading versus suspending the rules.
So to suspend the rules, we got to vote. So we're going to have to vote twice on this one. Just keep. So we got to vote first to suspend the rules. Press green button if you wish. So red if not.
Twenty-one yes, zero no.
So if it was first reading, we went, now we're suspending for the second. So we will need a motion then to approve.
Supervisor Hunt, motion approved.
Okay, Supervisor Hunt to approve. Is there a second?
I have seconds.
Supervisor I second.
Thank you. Sorry for the complication. And this is what really Tony talked about earlier about the $250 incentive for a single plan and a $500 incentive for the small, our family plan. And I just want to say that this is something that I've been, I've worked on personally for 10 years, something I wanted to do in the previous employer I was at, could never get it done. But our employees, once they start utilizing this, I've been studying this for a long time. They're going to, they're going to really enjoy this. One thing that wasn't mentioned, this is actually open to the public. So anybody can walk in or make appointments there. So you're able to do that as county board members or the general public. So that is something that is available to you. But very excited about this. And this does only, this only goes until January 31st of 2024. So it's really to try and get those first bodies in there and then get the word of mouth around. And this is becoming more common than they were 10 years ago. 10 years ago, this is really cutting edge. I mean, I really tried to get this done and just couldn't do it in my community. So very excited for the county employees, for the county in general. And I do feel like it's going to be a cost savings, and that's always important when we have limited resources. And, you know, we're hoping to utilize, if we are able to save funds, utilize those for wages and, and keep our good employees. So very excited about this.
Any questions? Supervisor Steele?
Go ahead.
Okay. What funds of money comes out of to?
The health fund. Yep. The same fund that we use for HRA dollars. So currently, they do get these dollars. We've just increased that amount. And Lori would know the details.
So how we really plan to fund those is by, we're going to have reduced claims. So we'll have the money in, it will, we'll pay more in the HRA area, but we'll have reduced claims.
So it's the health fund.
You know, that's our whole.
That's your whole?
Yep.
Okay.
Everything, we've seen, all the research shows that that's.
I just, I didn't know if you were going to take it out of this fund.
Oh, no, no, it'll be part of the health fund.
Okay.
Supervisor Bishop?
It's a great recruitment, too. I know my company is looking into self-funding. It's a big deal. So I would encourage the county as much as possible to fund that everywhere you're looking for help.
Supervisor Toodeberg?
Just to go on the record, I'll be abstaining from this as I am a current utilizer of the county's health insurance program. But I do want to give a commendation to, to Randy and to him for their work on this. I've heard nothing but good things about this. My wife has been pushing me towards the weight loss. Thank you for your work.
A lot of people involved in this, though.
Any further discussion? This will require two-thirds also.
Just regular the, the other one, dude.
Oh, for the spending. We are, okay. Get all my notes straight here. Okay, we will call the vote. To approve, press green. Disapprove, press red.
Nine.
Are we ready?
Twenty yes, zero no, one abstain.
Passes. We will move to the last item. County chair board for fire wardens. I would seek a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second. Supervisor Bishop.
Any discussion?
I know, how come these aren't issued to an individual rather as a entity? I guess that's my question. I know like with a liquor license, you had to have a actual person's name associated with a business. And these, you don't have to, why take it? You're... So you're saying the business is the warden, or how, how does that work?
As far as appointments. To, to cut through the quick of this, this is done over and over and has been going on for years. So I, you know.
The DNR sends it to us.
Yeah, it's, DNR never makes mistakes, right? So what it is, is pretty much, these are the same people, year after year. And these entities provide a service. You want to get your burning permit, you go here. That's where we're at. It's, act individuals left up to the entity. And again, that's to help service the public.
What is the duty of an emergency fire warden in a three-second thing?
Burning permits.
That's it. Okay. I kind of thought so, yeah.
Right. And that's why they, it's way, some go on and commission somebody else. So now that we got her completely confused, any other questions? Call the vote. Green to approve. Red to disapprove.
Twenty-one yes, zero no.
All right. I'm going to jump down to items for future agenda. But what I want to remind the board is that we have a special meeting on Tuesday, February 21st at 6:00 PM. And the exact meeting will be meeting just prior to that, at 5:00. So stay tuned. Anything else for the good, for agenda? If you come up with something, give me a shout and take care of it. Then I will seek a motion to adjourn.
Erickson will make that motion.
And a second? Heard. And everybody. Okay. All in favor, push the green button if you want to stay. Thank you.
One thing I.
I just didn't want to be here.
The second reading.
No, I just throw them in there, and then I figured out the next one. I'm like, oh, no, I don't.
Right. That's why I'm sitting there. No, no, no.
We don't have nips. Besides, that's like the DNR.
You know, that was so misinformation.